Good evening. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Eastline Ad Hoc Short Term Rental Committee. Let's rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, for its stand and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The second item on our agenda this evening is public delegations. Would anyone from the public like to address the committee? And you can take the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Ad Hoc Committee. Thank you for your time. I am Tristan Winkler, a trial attorney, and I stand here in steadfast defense of short-term rentals in Eastline. I want to make one thing clear: any attempt to ban or restrict short-term rentals will likely be met with significant legal challenges, not only to the moving municipality or any association that has moved towards restriction. The bias and apparent prejudice that's been demonstrated against short-term rentals is highly evident, and there's been no substantive evidence or factual arguments that have been presented that justifies the preclusion of short-term rentals. The claim that short-term rentals are altering the character of Eastline is not unsupported by evidence but also appears to be disingenuously misleading. This town's charm and appeal have remained intact, and the presence of short-term rentals has done nothing to erode the fabric of this community. The focus and comparisons to towns like No-Inc, Groton, and Ledger seems to be highly arbitrary. Why are we not comparing Eastline to very similar towns like Mystic, New London, or Waterford where short-term rentals have been embraced and proven successful? The positives of short-term rentals, including increased tourism, economic benefits to local businesses, and supple income for homeowners, were also taxpayers, are conveniently omitted from this committee's discussions. Moreover, the Whibby case, which has been cited numerous times by this very committee, was ruled in favor of allowing short-term rentals by the Supreme Court of Connecticut. Although that decision focused on whether short-term rentals are a permissible use of property under certain zoning regulations, it has nevertheless created a strong legal precedent in favor of allowing short-term rentals in the state of Connecticut. So my question is, why is there still continued pushback, which seems to be rooted in arbitrary biases and not grounded in the legal or factual merits? I just want to reiterate once again that it seems to be that any party attempting to ban short-term rentals will likely set themselves up for inevitable legal battles. In conclusion, I believe this committee should act in accordance with the law and recognize that the continued operation of short-term rentals is both lawful and beneficial to the town of Eastline. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler.
Chairman?
Could you ask the name and address? One moment. Yes, one moment, Mr. Winkler. Could you provide your address, your town that you...
My address?
Yes.
I live in Vermont. 10 Vermont Drive, Oakdale, Connecticut.
Okay. I'm sorry, you live in Oakdale, Connecticut?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the committee this evening?
What was the attorney's name? I'm sorry.
Attorney Winkler? Winkler?
Winkler.
Yes. Is there a first name to the...
Tristan.
Tristan, thank you.
Tristan with a T?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. No one else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3, which is approval of our last meeting minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We could not approve the meeting minutes of August 26th last time, but we will do it this time. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of meeting of August 26th.
So move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Perfect, okay. Any corrections, changes necessary? Let's see. I believe I had one myself at the bottom of page 2. This is the bottom of page 2 on the minutes of August 26th. It says that Ms. Santoro noted the Supreme Court case was not substantive. So there, I believe I was speaking about the Fenwick decision, the decision from the Supreme Court about the borough of Fenwick. Because, right, so just need to show that that is the case, yes. And that was it. Okay. Anything else on those minutes? Okay. All right. Seeing no other changes, so we will take a vote on the minutes as amended. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. There we go. We have it. We have approval of minutes needed for the meeting of September 23rd, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion. Any second? Someone to second? Anyone to second that motion for the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, Greg? Okay. Any changes? Any corrections?
Chair, I believe that was a meeting I was absent.
Okay.
And I marked as present inadvertently, so...
I missed you.
Okay.
And then there's a number of conversations that were included in those minutes. Are any of those going to get revisited?
Oh, yes.
We can at some point revisit some of the thoughts that came out of that meeting.
Absolutely. Because there were four of us present. We presented our draft recommendations, and those of you who could not make the meeting that night, that will be discussed tonight. We will continue those discussions tonight, for sure. The only other correction I have, myself, is the bottom of page 1. It said, "Ms. Santoro noted the reasoning." This is under reports of co-chairs. It was actually Gary here, yeah, speaking about the Whibby decision.
Who's that?
At the bottom of page 1, under reports, it was Gary here...
Gary said that.
Yes, was speaking about the inconsistencies in the Whibby decision. Okay. All right. So if there are no other changes to those minutes?
Oh, you know, I was looking at this absent.
Oh, okay.
I was here, I'm sorry. I didn't see that absent in the middle of that sentence.
Okay.
So, thank you. You did it correctly.
Okay.
But I'm glad you missed me.
So, minutes as amended. I'll take a vote here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any?
I abstained.
Okay, so we have the three abstentions. Both not here. Okay, great. Motion passes. Okay. We are on to Item 4, Agenda Item 4, reports of the co-chairs. Gary, do you have anything that you would like to report?
I have a couple of updates. The first of these is the Connecticut Council of Small Towns had a fall conference this past October 16th. Betsy Gara, who is the executive director, says that there wasn't maybe a dedicated presentation about short-term rentals, but there was discussion at that meeting about short-term rentals.
And there will be a tape provided, an audio tape provided of the presentations, and she will post them. So I'll keep a lookout, and then if there's, you know, some substantive information for everyone, I'll just pass it on to you. So that could be, you know, I had had some conversations with her, a conversation, and some email follow-ups, so hopefully it's one of the organizations that will directly address short-term rentals. It'd be very helpful. The council represents 116 towns in the state, so, of the 169, so that's pretty significant, I think. This evening, the original plan was to have Kathy Warzika, who is the town planner of Preston, come to speak to us. As I mentioned at the last meeting, they were having a meeting at the end of, the day after our meeting, to approve changes and amendments to their zoning regulations on short-term rentals. I thought I would go because I wanted to get the flavor of what was happening there, since this is all post-Whibby. So I did go to the meeting, spoke to her, tried to get her, you know, to come, and she had planned to come, but she's in the midst of other work right now on their plan of conservation and development, so we'll have to try to find a better time for her. But anyway, she will comment at some point, speak about Preston's experiences. As you recall, Preston was under a moratorium. They had stopped taking applications under their existing zoning regulations, and that was officially ended last June, sort of continued on until they could, they wanted to pause, not just because of the Whibby case, but also just to take a look at what they had on the books for the regulations and how they could improve it. They were particularly concerned about the effect of short-term rentals in residential areas. So you've had in your packet for reading the Preston regulations, and those are the ones actually passed. They became effective on the 14th. I won't go into the nuance of them and all the details. Just know that their regulation there happens by way of zoning, as we've seen, you know, time and again. There is no ordinance that accompanies their regulations. They do everything through their planning and zoning office, you know, from the permit application goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and all the enforcement, again, through zoning. The changes that they made had to do with definition of STR, including transient gas. The key thing that my takeaway, but again, as we're going on in this process, this is up to you to read and review and understand yourselves, but the thing I took away mostly was they do regulate by zone. This is a question that came up. Antherlo had suggested this approach. We had discussed it last time. We had asked our town attorney about the topic. I'll get to that later. And if you notice, I'll just find the page that it's on, but bear with me here. On page, page 2 of those regulations, at the top, those are the zones in which the STRs are permitted. I just looked them up and, you know, and basically, the STRs are not allowed in historic districts, which include the Preston City Village District. There's two historic districts there in that town. They are allowed in these various residential districts, including, and they are allowed in the Thames River District, which is the Preston Riverwalk area and surrounding areas. The thing to remember, I mean, where Eastline, they're Preston. It's a kind of quasi-rural town. However, they have many tourists. They are situated right by both casinos. You can't get any closer unless you're at the casinos. And square mileage-wise, the towns are actually not that far apart. It's just that their population is less and homes are farther apart. So I just pointed out that to you. And the other thing I'll point out to you, which is pretty, you know, creative in thinking, page 4, you know, there is a, an analysis which has to, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission, when it's considering one of these applications, goes through. And Item M, at the top of page 4, and a long list preceding it, says that the STR shall not impact the residential integrity of the surrounding residential neighborhood. And then they give some specificity as to what they would look at. So that's just something unique. I don't think we have seen that, and that is something that is definitely different from the earlier version of these. If you go to their website now, the old version is actually up. They haven't changed the website yet. So just some things to keep in mind. A very comprehensive set of regulations, I must say, quite specific, covers a lot of topics. They had planned to revisit their, you know, regulations, and they did as promised, so that's very good. Okay. Okay. The next item, which was included in your packet, I just want to, if you haven't had time, there's the minutes of, the minutes of the No-Inc meeting, latest Zoning Commission meeting of September 17th. And these were sent to you both by email and given you a copy you received this evening. If you didn't notice it, there was the ability to listen to the meeting itself. So if you can see at the top of that page, there is a link. So if you haven't done it, I highly recommend, sorry, there, on page 1 of the minutes, you'll see that link. All you have to do is click it on, and there you go. And it's approximately 40 to 45 minutes long, but it's a good discussion. First of all, a good presentation by their town attorney, John Casey. Secondly, a good give and take between the members of the zoning commission there and Attorney Casey. So it was, I think, very fortuitous that we, that that happened. Again, another town's experience after the Whibby case, talking about the case and then acting on it. So what they're planning to do, and again, you can go back and just listen to the tape if you wish, but what they're planning to do on November 12th is to have a public hearing on a text amendment, and they just want to codify their definition of short-term rental. And as you know, there, they allow longer-term rentals over 30 days. But very interestingly, Attorney Casey discusses these related topics of grandfathering, generally, moratoriums, when that's appropriate. And he points out that Whibby is not done because Mr. Whibby has to go back to his local zoning board of appeals or board and deal with a pre-existing use issue. So he has to go through that analysis, you know. So that was very interesting, to basically determine for himself that grandfathering issue. So that'll be a determination of whether the rentals were sort of, if they repeated or if they were one-time incidences, and were they for families? That's the other issue. So again, yeah, highly recommend that. In fact, it's a lot easier to follow the tape, the audio tape, than it is to read the minutes, although the minutes are excellent, but you get the full flavor of this conversation and this presentation. The last thing I have is, I will actually hand this out to you. This is from our attorney to us, because we had a couple of questions from our last meeting. Oh, great. Perfect, yes. And the two questions appear in my email to him, and you can read this later, but, and the first one has to do with the application of Whibby and the specific question about regulating by zone, because that had come up. And so you will see that responded to in Attorney Zamarka's memo to us, to the committee. And the second question had to do with the authority of our beach communities that do not have their own zoning, what would be other authority that they can invoke if they wish to regulate short-term rentals? And there's some response to that as well. So just something I will pass out here. Generally speaking, when we get, you know, memos, legal memos from our town attorney, I don't email. I will hand you, because I don't know in whose hands legal advice ends up, so that's why that's here. So that's it for me. Yeah, so...
That's just an extra cut.
Yeah, that's great. And we can, you know, as we need to read and digest that and utilize the information given, I would say, after you have read it, if you have need for clarification or information or if we have more questions for Attorney Zamarka, please let Gary or myself know, and then we will pass them on. We just want to be precise about the legalities, particularly in view of Whibby and the Connecticut statute that was recently enacted. Okay, so I think that I'm done with reporting, and so we can move on to item number 5. So basically, there are three of you remaining that didn't have the opportunity yet to present your suggested draft recommendations, and so we can just, we can cover that tonight, have some discussion, and then, you know, move on to how we're going to resolve things, what process we'll, but this was our first foray, our first attempt individually. This is for the public's benefit. This was our first attempt as individual members to try and wrap our heads around the difficult issue, and if we, you know, on the spot had to do something, what would we suggest? And we have a variety of approaches. This is early in the final recommendation process, very early, as you will see. So between Greg and Paul and Gary here, anyone can jump in and go first.
Whatever anybody wants.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Yeah. Paul, you can jump in if you'd like. Sure. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, the way I can counter anything you say.
Anything and everything.
Pretty much, yeah.
Thanks.
The election of your over in prison.
Boy.
And then the next one will start. So I have a question before I start.
Sure.
It's because there are a number of attorneys in the room. Going back to the, you know, a lot has been made of the Whibby decision that says it allows the towns to regulate after it permits short-term rental in the first part, right? As a generalization, that's what. Right? Am I saying that?
Yeah, it doesn't forbid the regulation of short-term rentals. Correct.
So it talks about having a permitted use, but the last paragraph where it says, I'm wondering if it's misconstrued or if I'm just misconstruing it. Most likely I am, but it says that, again, the defendants concede that renting a single-family dwelling is a permitted use, so nothing under the 94 regulations between long-term rentals and short-term rentals. Differentiates between long-term rentals and short-term rentals. Although zoning authorities are free to adopt regulations that permit only long-term rentals in an effort to promote stability and a sense of community within a single-family zone, as Pine Orchard did, we do not agree with the court's in Stillar and Slice of Life LLC that a regulation that permits single-family dwelling ipso facto prohibits the rental of a dwelling less than a particular period of time. So I'm not sure what the Stillar Slice of Life LLC does, but ipso facto, I did look up, and it says by that very fact itself or by the fact itself. So my reading of this doesn't seem to indicate to me that they're saying that on one hand you can do this, on the other hand, you can do that, which is what I thought your interpretation was in the last minutes. I'm saying that, I'm reading it as to say, we do not agree with that, that a regulation that permits by the fact itself prohibits the rental of a dwelling less than a particular period of time. So if you read it all the way through in one sentence, they're saying, in my mind, and again, I could be all wrong because I'm not a trained attorney, but it would seem that they're saying towns have done this, but yet we don't agree with it. Towns have restricted, but we don't agree with it. That's how I'm kind of reading that. So I was hoping that Mr. Zamarka was here tonight, that I could get an opinion on that. But I didn't read what you, what those two questions are, once he may have addressed something similar to that.
Yes, it is a little similar. So I think your question we partially answered by looking at question 1 and then his answer to that. My general understanding of the case is there isn't, there isn't a prohibition of regulating short-term rentals, that, you know, that somehow you can't regulate. No, I mean, it was very narrowly, broadly, both broadly applied, narrowly, you know, made as well concerning those regulations in question. And the problem with the regulations is that with, the court did not want to infer and put about short-term rentals in a more general regulation about single-family dwellings. It didn't want to make that inference. So it went through this kind of, would you say, almost torturous, very, we'll say detailed, I won't say torturous, but detailed approach of looking at definitions, but it just wanted to protect the, protect one's right to rent, but it doesn't forbid regulation.
Right. Regulation versus...
Yeah. And then, in fact, it goes on to say, towards the end, and I don't have it in front of me, but that if you, if you do want to, you know, if you want to be extra careful in trying to protect the residential nature of a community, you could do longer-term rentals. That, I mean, that's actually expressly said in there. It kind of went a little further than they needed to, but it's in there.
Well, it says, "Although zoning authorities are free to adopt regulations that permit only long-term rentals in an effort to promote stability and sense of community." I mean, we can have an argument about that.
Yeah, right.
"But as Pine Orchard did, we do not agree with that." That's how I'm reading it. And not knowing what specifically Stillar and Slice of Life LLC were, we assume, my assumption is that it had something to do with short and long-term rentals, but what I'm reading this is one comment, that although towns are free to do that, we don't agree with that.
So what we can do is get your question in a form that Mark can answer, and then all of us can look back. I'd have to go back to the last three, four, five. Yes, I...
It's the last page.
Yeah, it's the last page, but what happens in the preceding few paragraphs about the two cases, and then read the language a little more closely.
Anyway, that, I mean, I think that's part of the issue that we're going to face is the interpretation of this decision for legal challenges, as the counselor spoke of earlier. You know, and I do kind of agree with the gentleman that, you know, we're taking Preston, which is, as you noted, rightfully has, thousands upon thousands of people visit them because of the casinos are a stone's throw away from them. So they may want to react a little differently than perhaps we might want to act, because we're not faced with quite that number of people.
Was that Paul?
Oh, Preston.
What's that?
Oh, Preston is doing. I got you.
Preston, right? And then No-Inc, I mean, most of No-Inc could probably fit in this room, you know. So having, you know, having short-term rentals there may be a little bit more cumbersome for the neighbors, because you can reach out and open your next-door neighbor's window in a lot of places, so. So I don't know that it's an apples-to-apples conversation.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it can never, it can really never be, because it seems as though every single town has, you know, particular needs and, you know, unique character and different needs, and the way the houses are placed, the, you know, closeness of homes, et cetera, the rural nature of them.
So I'm only saying that as kind of a buildup. You asked me to go over the short dissertation that I gave everybody.
Yes, that would be great.
I don't know if you have it or don't have it.
Yeah, I have it from the past.
It has to do with the history of our community, pretty much, and recognizing the fact that we are an advisory group of folks put together with a charge to advise the Board of Selecting. And I think that we could probably do that over the next 24 hours, given what we've all talked about over the last 14 months, and the fact that we haven't had really more than three or four people come up and say that they disagree with, you know, they want short-term rentals out, they've had a big problem, we have a house in Greg's neighborhood that's been a problem, according to, you know, their community, but very little elsewhere in the community. Even the police said that they don't have any opportunities and any record of any short-term rental problems. The noise ordinances that we have are on the books. They're difficult to enforce because of the calibration cost of the measuring device that does the noise, but people still have to call the police if there's a disturbance in their neighborhood. have to call the police if there's a disturbance in their neighborhood and the people, the police will come out and assess the situation as they're trained to do, and if it's overly loud, the chief said that they would deal with it, both chiefs said that they would be able to deal with it that way. So, I don't see that as a big issue in terms of it. And, you know, I, I am a short-term rental owner in a beach community of houses that live close together, and I disagree with the, the whole argument of, you know, neighborhood fabric is being destroyed and all of that. Because I, I see quite the opposite. The people that I'm associated with in that, they come for Con College and other school graduations, and it's a family field. They come for weddings that happen in, on the shoreline, whether it's in Niantic or other places, and it's a, it's a family neighborhood field. There are people that grew up there and moved away that want to come back because they felt that pull of the fabric of that community there. These are the kind of people that we don't, we very specifically say no parties, and we're very strict about the rules of our neighborhood, no parking on the street and all of those things. So, you know, with, with, with that as a background, my, my discussion item, presentation, the draft, as you call it, is that these things have been happening here in the shoreline in Connecticut, rural towns for a century or more. I mean, I made the comment that my dad took me as a very young boy to a rental house in Sa- Old Sabre, down the beach, you know, and that was sixty-some-odd years ago. That, so this has been happening, people have vacation homes all over. We are getting an increase of interest because of the apps, as you rightfully pointed out a few meetings ago, and I think that, you know, cell phones have changed our lives in, in many ways. We've had no instances in the neighborhood that I'm at, that people are concerned about short-term rentals. I did talk about the, the failure of the zoning commission to identify rentals of both year-round and academic. I, I think that's a problem. You have indicated that you don't think that's our problem or our thing to worry about. I think it should be part of the conversation. I certainly don't want to get into another year-and-a-half conversation about another type of rental, but I think that those things could be appropriately dealt with in the zoning regulations. You know, the definitions can be inserted in there for academic, for long-term, for short-term, and there are still a number of regulations that, that you can put on or restrictions, and you could, you know, you could ask people to fill out forms and all of that other stuff. I'm, I'm not a fan of bigger government, so I'm not a fan of adding fees like Preston was five hundred bucks or something, you know, which is, you know, that's a bit, a bit ridiculous as far as I can see, but if, if we have long-term rentals here in our community and we treat them one way, and the Supreme Court says they must be treated equally because their right to rent is not specifically decided about the length of time it's rented, then we should treat short-term rentals that way. If there's a, a report that's required that goes to the assessor, if there's any of those things, you know, then, I, I think most people that develop short-term rentals don't, won't have a problem with that, you know? I know there's been some talk about, oh, you put in that, nobody's gonna comply. That may or may not be the case. That's a different conversation that I think we can have, because you could argue that within zoning or within, you know, any other agency we have, people often don't comply, you know? So, how do, how do we change that? I don't, I don't know that we do. I'm more of in favor of empowering people to do things instead of regulating people to do things, so. I mentioned that these families take pride and enjoyment in the opportunities in our neighborhood, and I talked about some of the events they come here for. One young couple, little less than middle-aged, forties maybe, where the woman grew up summers at, at a young age of three, four, and five, and her, her mom died and she was, her dad couldn't take care of her that well, so he put her here in the summer and did his business where they lived full-time in another state. And, you know, now, as you fast-forward another thirty years, she's coming back to revisit the area that she has fond memories and rekindle that connection to that area of Niantic that she felt and made best friends, and, and parents of her best friends became her de facto parents, so. So, I think all this conversation about destroying the fabric of the community, I think is not really a hundred percent correct. And I, you know, I can give that example as one item that I'm going for, so. The website talks about different restrictions, I talked about that, parking and trash and all of that. So, again, my suggestions would be that the zoning commission define long, short, and academic rentals in definition sections. That the above rentals be listed in appropriate sections of the zoning regulations as a permitted use by right in residential and commercial zones without the native special permit. There are other precedents in the regulations that are allowed that way now. I don't think it would be a stretch to be able to do that. And I also think that if we were to try to legislate against a certain zone, that would be grounds for a challenge, that, from what I read, Mr. Zamarka, I didn't, I didn't read his answer today, but there was a previous comment where he said that would invite legal challenges. That all rentals of residential property be required to fill out an information or registration card to be filed with the town assessor's office. That's academic, long-term, short-term, whatever. The form would include rental location, rental intent, and all of the owner's information related to name, address, contact, email, serial, you know, if owned by an LLC, the controlling member, if owned by a corporation, at least one officer. Most of that information is probably already in one of the rooms to my left now, so I don't think that would be too cumbersome. The assessor follow-up applicable state and local law and determine any tax implications as a result of the rental use and be empowered, if not already, to adjust the taxes necessary. There may be two percent of the rental people in East Line, long, short, or academic, that might be affected by that. There could be thirty percent, could be more than. I have no idea what they are. I don't think, listening to the assessor speak to us, that she said she was fully empowered by state law to do some of these things. So, the state law that I would reference today, what is it, twenty-four dash one seventy-three or whatever that number was, I read today, it's like one paragraph.
Oh, the, the, it's one forty-three, I believe?
One forty-three, yeah.
Yeah, right. The Public Act of last, that came from the last session of our legislature, yes.
Yeah, and it just, you know, by vote of the legislative body, you can adopt an ordinance to require licensure and regulate the operation and use, and then hire a consultant to help draft those things. It really didn't say much of, much of anything.
No.
Beyond that, it was only, I think, eleven or twelve lines of, of that long bill, so. So, I think that would be very easy to, to deal with. The town agencies, oh, let me make sure I didn't skip a spot here. There'd be no fee associated with the registrations, I believe, the tax implication would be sufficient to cover any additional costs that may be incurred, and I don't think we should have fees for everything that we do here in the community, so. That local enforcement agents of the town, all of the town agencies are required to give a report to the Board of Selectment every year. It's already something that they do. So, I think it'd be easy enough for them to be required to report, that annual town report, the impact that rental activity has had on their agency in the community. The fire marshal says that we've had twelve fires in rentals and no fires in residential, you know, maybe there's an issue, or there's been thirty arrests made, or the zoning guy had to do this or that. I think it'd be very interest, easy enough to put that in there, and that would be information that would be accessible to the public on record. And then I think it opens, you know, maybe, maybe for another committee or another conversation, a broader discussion on the impact of what our zoning and town, regulations and town ordinance have on housing stock, you know? I mean, we, we are in dire need of housing for the people that support our communities and, and, you know, many of us, you know, there's just no place to go. People want to sell their house and take advantage of this market, but there's nowhere to move to, right? Unless you get lucky and you find something first. So, so housing is a big issue, and that needs to have state help, I think, in order to open some of the, loosen up some of the regulations to allow things to happen here. You know, one of the things we did when I was here in Niantic was, I added a, you know, a couple of areas in downtown Niantic where you could increase the density of these lots to allow for a developer to have one more unit to bring people downtown at, at the same time as the other, the other units would, would be there. And it was a way to try to encourage the developer to get some income out of it and also bring people downtown to be customers, to the, to the people that, you know, work down there and have businesses down there. And then we did businesses along the first story and residences from the second or third. And I understand the zoning commission, since I've been gone, has changed some of that, which I believe is a mistake, and hopefully that's gonna be reversed in, in the near future when Niantic really gets cooking with this, you know, with this new charrette coming and a lot of ideas from Niantic Main Street, perhaps, there's a lot of things that are happening there, so. But anyway, I think that that's an important discussion to have, and I think they're all tied in because there's been conversation about short-term rentals taking away from the housing stock in East Line. And I don't know that that's a large portion of the case. Certainly people who rent homes like, like I have are not gonna be affordable housing folks or workforce housing folks or other, other housing stock. We need something more in the middle of the road that, and I think maybe you'd have a good argument for that, but there's just not that housing here, so. So, I think a broader discussion is warranted, and I don't see why that couldn't be part of a recommendation of the Board of Selectment. You know, they could look at what we give them and say, what a bunch of nuts. We're gonna do our own thing. So, it could all be done all over again with seven different minds, you know, six different minds coming up, you know? But, anyway, I don't, I don't know. That's pretty much the gist of what I wrote to you.
Thanks, Paul, yeah. Does anyone have a question for Paul?
But I do agree that, you know, discipline, not allowing short-term rentals or over-regulating them is a mistake, and I think that, you know, I think a lot of it's been worked into the problem that Greg had, has, you know, ordinances on the books, opportunities that are on the books, in my view, would help solve a lot of that, maybe not all of it, but a lot of that, so. So, that's what I got.
Okay, thanks very much, okay. Anyone have questions for Paul? And you can, we can, as we're going on, we can ask them as we hear everyone else's presentations as well, so we can come back to some of the points he's made, if you wish. Why don't we, um, Gary, would you like to go ahead and?
Sure.
Talk about your, on suggestions?
So, I find myself in large agreement with what Paul put forward. However, I do think that it would be beneficial to the town, to the residents, and to the landlords who have rental properties, for the town to adopt an ordinance that sanctions rental properties and then provides regulations for those rental properties. In my mind, listening to everything that we've heard and everything that we've read, I don't understand why we are speaking differently about long-term rentals and short-term rentals and academic rentals. I think an ordinance that sanctions rentals in the town through a permitting process is a simple and equitable way to establish a good procedure and a procedure that everybody understands. And while Paul talks about how responsible he is as a landlord, he's one landlord, and other landlords could have other ideas about what makes a good relationship, a good business relationship, a good neighbor relationship. I think if the town had, through zoning regulations, what noise, parking, parties, all of those things, and have them established for renters of a short-term rental, of an academic rental, and of a long-term rental, it would give the town a comprehensive database where we can really start to do research on the impact of rentals on the community, if there is one, if there isn't one, the impact of housing prices. This, this database would give the assessor a starting point for her to get into these various rental properties and assess the tax implications of them. Also, if there were a permitting process, and that process applied to long-term, to short-term, to academic, then those rules would also apply. And if there was a landlord who didn't adopt all the best practices that Paul described in his rental units, then a complaint could go forward to the town, the town could review it, and if there was a bad actor among the landlord, that permit could get revoked or not renewed. But as long as the landlord complied with the town's zoning regulations and kept its permit on an annual basis, then everything is, is fine to proceed. I just, I, I think that that as an ordinance gives the entire town a common understanding of how rentals are handled. I live in a neighborhood that has had rental properties since it's been a neighborhood, even really before it was a neighborhood. In Oswegachi Hills and Saunders Point, I live in a cul-de-sac that's got fifteen homes in it, and six of them are rental units. Half of them are long-term, half of them are short-term. We haven't had any problems in, I've been living there since two thousand and fifteen. And if we try to restrict or refuse to allow short-term rental units, I'd be buying a big problem in my, in my neighborhood. In fact, I would be opposed to it just because I like the way it is. However, there is also legitimate concern that as more and more of these come online, the character of the neighborhood, and by that we mean the involvement in social activities in the neighborhood, and the way the neighbors constantly coalesce around each other in times of need, in times of stress, in times of medical emergencies, that's what people are really aspiring to preserve in, in our community. And I think- And I think establishing an ordinance that would be uniform across the board for landlords to rent their properties is a good way to proceed. And I also think that these zoning regulations, I agree with Paul, that those belong in the zoning commission. If we recommend to the board that an ordinance be established for a permitting process for rentals and leave it at that, the zoning commission can then deal with whether there is a difference in language between short-term and long-term, or parties, or any of these other regulations. The other thing for doing an ordinance is that all of the beach communities, every, every neighborhood in the town would have a common permit starting point. The beach communities that have their own zoning regulations could choose to adopt what the town's doing, or it could make it more specific to itself. It leaves them with that flexibility. But it also provides for those beach communities a way to appeal or complain about a problem with renters to the town, and it would give the town an administration to investigate and either dismiss it or pull the permit or not renew the permit in the future. As far as permitting fees, I, I have no opinions on this, other than that we could make it super simple with either no fee or a very minimal fee, just to fill out the annual permit. Or if we chose to have inspections as part of the permitting process, there would be a fee that would cover those costs of inspections. But if you wanted, if you were concerned about the non-compliance issue that you have raised a couple of times, then hiring a rental committee enforcement officer would be a more expensive way to go. But that person could respond to complaints, they could oversee the approval process for the permitting, and if necessary, they could pull the permit. To me, it seems like a simple, equitable way forward here.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm sorry. Questions? Again, I, I just have one. Could you clarify what you see an ordinance covering and what you see zoning covering?
I, I would confine the ordinance to this permitting process.
Okay.
And I think on this committee, we should, if we go down this route, we should make a recommendation for how much enforcement we want to put into this, whether we think inspections are critical and mandatory. And that would determine, I think, what we would recommend as, as a fee. I don't really have an opinion on that, other than I think inspections are a good idea. But in terms of compliance and, you know, how tight you want to make the, the regulatory thing, Paul makes some good arguments about, you know, less is more.
I think, you know, I think we've seen as a, you know, as a, as a committee, we've seen a good variety of very detailed zoning regulations on STRs such as Preston's, such as Simsbury, as I recall, very detailed, and others. And then we've seen, you know, lesser, lesser of them, lesser regulations, we'll say.
Yeah. And I would argue that if we decide we want to go down that road, that the zoning commission is the place to do that, not us.
Yes. Okay. Yes, I mean, the authority of zoning has been discussed by the committee a number of times and, and, yeah, and just to point out again, this body isn't going to make any determination as to what precisely would be in a zoning regulation. It may just be a recommendation that, you know, here's a good example from town X.
Right.
And they cover these ten topics. You should think about covering those as well. So we have enough to pull from for that kind of thing. Okay. It's interesting, I, I have a, I had a different approach in my analysis, of course, but, which I gave last time, but one thing that we're in agreement on, trying to find areas of agreement and disagreement, where we might have a registry or something like that, I would, I would, and we, we are faced with that problem of non-compliance, you know, of STRs floating out there, but we don't know where they are, who they are, you know, who's running them, et cetera. That, and this goes to Paul's point about empowering, but my suggestion was, if on the platforms, these, these folks could say they have a certification from the town that they have done a registration, that they have actually done, you know, a, various inspections, then that's the benefit. So you're not forcing the issue, but, you know, but they can't say, you know, can't claim that certification otherwise. But that was just sort of trying to give a little, a little carrot there.
Yeah.
So.
And the, the permit, to me, it, it tells the landlord, we welcome you, we welcome you to have your business here, we want you to thrive, but you need the permit. And here's the zoning regulations that go along with this permit. And if you're out of compliance, or there's things that are, are found that need correcting, that don't get corrected, the permit gets pulled and you're no longer in business.
Yeah. And just to point out, there are communities, there are towns that have done many of the things you've suggested by way of zoning primarily. I mean, just keeping it in-house, not hiring a whole lot more personnel, and, you know, everything is right there in the zoning office. And that information is then given to the assessor, et cetera.
Correct.
So, and the assessor sounds, I mean, just to point this out, the assessor from her appearance here two meetings ago, seems to be on top of the personal property aspect. So she is, she is definitely looking, and she's familiar with all the properties. So she's looking, I think, you know, to, to tap into that. It's not a lot of tax dollars for, obviously, personal property for the, for the town, but nevertheless, I mean, she's definitely, you know, turning the rocks there and trying to find it, so.
And earlier in this process, I interviewed Mr. Mulholland, the zoning director.
Yes.
And he was not in favor of going down this road, but he said if, if the board decides to go down this road, that his department is equipped to handle the permitting process.
Yes. That's a point I actually made last, last meeting, that he has said that. And by the way, I just want to thank him for keeping us up to date on NOANK and, and just giving us that extra legal explanation about WIBBIE. I, I found that very helpful, so, yeah, that was very helpful. Okay. All right. Anybody else have questions for Gary here? Okay, Greg, would you like to?
I'd like to partake.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I mean, I won't take the time out to, you know, sort of pull out from everyone where there's been agreement, but we, we have agreement, but we also have some disagreements, so, but we'll work it out.
So I, I took a pretty strong stand before it was gone. I think we need to, we've talked about zoning versus ordinance. I think zoning needs to define property use, which they have not done in East Line. And without that, any ordinance that we would want to pass would be meaningless. Because as Gary's pointed out before, the way the zoning permits are listed right now, you could make an argument for there is no renting allowed in East Line. I agree with some of the things that Paul said, not many, but, no. I agree with, you know, the vast majority of what Gary said. I think we need an ordinance that has a registration system. I don't think we're going to know the dimensions of the issue until we try to get our arms around it, which I think would be an ordinance. And whether there's a fee or not a fee is not up to me to say. We need, the fire marshal has already agreed that he can do a fifteen-minute inspection and he has the people to do that. And I think we'd be saving ourselves as a town a lot of heartache if we can, you know, avoid carbon monoxide poisoning, for example, or a fire, or, you know, God knows what else, for a fifteen-minute inspection. I mean, I think that's more than reasonable. And my understanding of, like Airbnb and VRBO, is that they often require those kinds of safety criteria from their landlords anyways. So it's, it may be redundant, but, you know, I don't think that's too much. Yeah, I think, you know, I agree with Paul, we have, we have, let me write this down, we have, we have a noise ordinance.
Town ten.
We have, we have a noise ordinance in town, there's no reason to pass a new one. Just find a way to enforce the one we have. We have parking ordinances on the books. Again, no reason for anything new there, just enforce the one we have. I will say, it's not clear to most people how that process works. But basically, if you can get in touch with the police commission, you can come out and have your street surveyed and see if they should be on the street parking, is it wide enough, can an emergency vehicle get by, that kind of stuff. But those ordinances exist, and I don't think we need to rewrite those books.
Yeah. And in fact, though, if I could say here, those were well explained, I think, in the report, so, yeah, for sure, they just need to be advanced and used.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I haven't had a chance to read the Preston handout yet.
Oh, sure. Okay.
But I really like what I see. Paul would have predicted that. But again, and I think, you know, in spite of the threat of legal action, nobody on this commission is espousing that we do a NOANK and just say there's no short-term rental allowed, period. I think we just want to get our arms around it and do the things that Gary talked about in terms of, you know, if you do the following things, we're behind you all the way, good luck, you know? But if you don't play ball with these media, with these minimal regulations that we're suggesting, just a registration, you know, not even to the extent of Preston, where they're saying no more than six people in a building at a time, we, we can, you know, it's a start. And if that becomes a problem, if we end up with, you know, thirty-five people in a home, whatever, something ridiculous, which even sounds ridiculous, but it actually happened, so, you know, can't get too ridiculous. But, easy, simple first steps, zoning has to do their part. I would recommend to the board of selectmen that we embrace a permit system, and what information is required there, I would say the minimum is a safety inspection by the fire marshal. The rest of it, they can fill in the details as they like, but I think that's definitely where we need to go. And thank you for the time.
Yeah. Thank you. Questions for Greg? Okay. Okay. All right, so there you have it, and I, I take it that, for three of you have also looked at the minutes from the last meeting with a video, whatever, so you got a sense of where we were, you know, trying to come from. So, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, as I said, we definitely have areas of agreement, we have some areas of disagreement. I'm not sure how best to start discussing that, but we, we may want to go right into agenda item six, because that might start the conversation about outstanding issues and a process to reach some final recommendations. And I think, Gary, you, I don't know if, if everyone, I know those of us who went to the last meeting did get Gary's chart, which was a, a way of, you know, there are various options, you know, looking, looking at his chart and deciding on a kind of best option. Nothing was perfect, we, we understand that from the get-go. And interestingly, Gary and I kind of reached a similar conclusion, him a little more by ordinance, me more by zoning, but it was a similar kind of analysis. And just for the record and for the public, each of us worked individually on our recommendations, so we never spoke to each other about, other than what we had spoken to each other right here in this room, but we never spoke, so, and you can see that clearly in the variety of infor, of approaches. So, but Gary had a concern that he's expressed repeatedly, I have sometimes also, you know, expressed it, and if you look at six A here on our agenda, before we get to resolution and best approach, that threshold question to figure out, yea or nay, is this a good thing for East Line? Are, are, you know, allowing, understanding our zoning regulations as they are currently written, is, is saying STRs are okay under certain circumstances, whatever, is this the way the town wants to go? And, and really starting to grapple with that question in a way we may not have fully before. We have had so much input, evidence, not necessarily to directly answer that question, but we've had so much information, so the trick is going to be to glean from all of that what your feeling is on that topic. In our report, I think we, we did a good job of synthesizing a lot of the information we had from the public hearings, the emails we were getting, letters, whatever. But that, that sort of, you know, is kind of the beginning, beginning of a, of a process of helping us to get, you know, to get there. And I, I know I'm just the, the process person always, and I couldn't help myself, but I did, this is not necessarily the process we're going to do, but I said to myself, okay, if I had to pick a process, what would it look like in the next couple of weeks? And we can pass those on. So, and this is kind of based a little bit on what I wrote in my own draft recommendation, but it's also, brings it forward to the current time and, and to the future of us finally at number nine, presenting some addendum to our status report to the board of selectmen. So these are kind of the little hurdles we need to get over and past. And we had promised ourselves at one point that we would revisit our committee goals, and those are in the report on page thirteen. I think we've done a good job, now that I think about those goals, because I used them when I was doing my draft recommendations, I think we've done a really good job of sticking to those goals. For, you know, some can have done better or whatever, but, but that's the second one, which is, again, Gary's point, he can speak to this better than I can, that threshold question and how we get past it. Because as recommenders of policy, we need to, you know, make our case, it's the lawyer in us, but we need to make our case that there is, there's a, a need or a desire to have at least the STRs we have now and likely more. Okay? So, maybe that should be a starting place for us. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we, what I see is that we've been stuck in the weeds a lot with regulations. That's not the first primary question. Sooner or later, we really need to reach a decision whether East Line wants to continue to allow short-term rentals or not. And we need to do this in a, in a, we need to have a process in our, in our discussion, not just jump to, you know, what positions we all think might be a good idea, but we also, we need to determine, is short-term rentals good or bad? And at some point, we all need to answer that question as members of this committee. So, and I don't think- So, and I don't think I've, I have not heard that a lot from, from everyone. So at some point, we're gonna need to do that here. So we, it's not a vote, but you're gonna have to, I think everyone's gonna have to make an argument. Do you want short term rentals to, to continue in East Lime and to grow? Or do we wanna control the numbers or, or not? And we need to voice our positions, what we think is good for East Lime. Cannot ignore that question. That's the first question. We, it's easy to jump into regulations, that's the easy stuff. But we need to answer that question for the town. And it's, for the Board of Selectmen, they're, they're gonna look to us for something, for some advice.
Right.
And we need to give them some, some advice. And if we don't talk about that issue, then we don't do, we're not doing our, our due diligence here. That's, that's how I look at it. That's why I keep bringing up the issues that I keep bringing up, because I don't hear them being discussed, so I keep bringing them up, period. If we don't discuss all the issues, then we should just pack our bags and leave because we're ineffective. If we address all the issues, and I keep banging, we need to address these issues, and I know people don't like to hear them, but we need to talk about it. We need to talk about it. Simple as that. So in one of our future meetings, we're gonna need to have that discussion first and finish that discussion. It may take five minutes, it may take the whole meeting. I don't think it'll take too long.
So if I could say, so in coming up with my own draft recommendations that I talked about at the last meeting, I had to start someplace, and it's kind of driving me crazy, like where to start. So I, I actually, that was one of the things that I did from the get-go. It was, it was kind of painful and a little tedious, because I had some, you know, end results maybe in my head, but I started, I did try to begin at the beginning and tried to answer that question by, by looking at the report again, looking at the, the pros and cons, and is this a direction I want to go? So I, it may not be grand, but I have to tell you, I did try to do what you suggested. In my report, it led me to probably a little bit different outcome than, and I'm probably a little more, a little more on the more negative side than the rest of you, but it was because I did that analysis that that happened. My analysis in that draft recommendation doesn't mean that's where I stand permanently, but it was an exercise for me, because I said I had to meet, you know, I went to look at the goals, then I did, then I did this balancing thing, and then I looked at the legalities, current legalities, you know, current legal framework, et cetera, and then I came up with what I came up with. But, so that was the toughest part for me, same thing. So I, I, you know, and I, I value that question, I just want you to know that. And I, I think Gary makes an excellent point that, again, as recommenders of policy, which we, which is our charge from the Board of Selectmen, we need to at least do that, you know? And doesn't mean you can't come to a, a certain result. Or if you look at, at Gary's chart, I mean, there's many, there are, there are poss, there are many possibilities. Some may be a little better, maybe a little worse, and you can make arguments, you know, for them. So, but, yeah, we will have to have that discussion. So what do you recommend for that? I'm open to suggestions on how we, we get to that point. It's in a separate meeting, if we don't?
I could tell you mine right now in a minute and a half.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
You don't have to.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I did almost everything but say that in the opening paragraph here. This has been a century or so of use here, and the only thing that's really changed is the apps and the internet and, you know, but the malls are empty, payphones are gone, taxis are diminishing, all because the progress of technology. And we're seeing that same thing affect here with short term rentals. Now we're being called short term rentals and now vacation homes. People are coming here to go to a graduation for three days. That's why I disagree with John's seven day thing. Say three days to go to a college graduation or a high school graduation and not staying in four hotel rooms down there. They're putting their family in one house, and they're able to have meals, and they're able to have enjoyment of the amenities that the town or the neighborhood offers. So I think they create a huge benefit. I think, I don't think that they're adversely affecting neighborhoods. There may be one or two or five, but I don't think ten years from now there's gonna be five hundred that are affecting our neighborhood. You know, to your point about gathering people together in times of need, and, you know, renters don't do that. There may be an argument to be made there, but I don't think they're negatively affecting the neighborhoods that they're in by causing, you know, problems or living a different way or just being inconsiderate, walking over people's lawns and all of that. I think they fit right in. I gave some examples of what I've seen with graduations and weddings and people coming back.
Right, yeah, we heard that.
Revisiting.
Yes.
So I think it's a benefit, and I think it will always be a benefit. And I think if I just, I think Airbnb in particular has changed the way it does business over the last three years. Instead of just promoting situations that could cause havoc, like perhaps in Greg's neighborhood, for the sake of advertising a rental unit, they've been more specific about parties and regulations and, you know, kowtowing to town and stuff. They've changed, if you look at the way they've advertised things. VRBO, I think, has always had a more conservative approach to their application. There could be fifty other apps that are, that are out there too, right? So, but that's just what we have to deal with now with life. That's how things are being done. You don't call a cab, you get on your phone and an Uber comes if you want public transport, or you get on, you know? So, so I think they're a benefit. I don't think that we need to abolish them. I think having a registration system so that if there is a problem, it's easy to get ahold of somebody and, and things can be corrected or writing a letter. So I'm, I'm all for that, and so I, I think they're a good thing, and I don't, I don't think they should, they should go away. If you wanna regulate them, zoning is the first step. That's land use, so they have to be identified, but.
Yeah, it's really scary how you and I say the same words. It's just really freaky. But I have to agree with Paul, but not for the reasons that he enumerated. I think short term rentals have been, as I said in an early meeting here, people have rented their homes in East Lime for over a hundred years. Usually it was for a month at a time, because that's the way life was back then. There were no cell phones, there was no Uber. You know, the father worked at Hartford and commuted down for the nights or whatever, but.
He played Monopoly.
Yeah, he played Monopoly, or he played, you know, Hearts or whatever, you know? He drank a little Jack Daniels, but, you know, whatever.
Not in that order.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. But, but I, I think that question has been answered. I think, you know, we've been doing rentals in East Lime for generations. And the only difference is, as Paul pointed out, are the apps. It's Airbnb, VRBO, and now people seem to be able to rent for a day, two days, three days, which makes it a little different and a little more commercial feeling, you know, when people are renting homes in your neighborhood. So I, I, I agree with Paul. I don't think, I think short term rentals are here to stay, they're not going anywhere. And it would be foolish to try to prohibit them.
Be foolish to do what?
To try to prohibit them.
Prohibit them. All right, so you, did you look at my chart? I made a chart.
I have not.
Okay. So you think there should, the short term rentals should be unlimited in, in number in East Lime?
So that's a different question.
Well, it's a question we need to decide.
I agree that, I mean, if it was, was it you, Gary, that said somebody, some commercial group could come in and buy, you know, thirty of the forty-five homes in Summers Point, and all of a sudden we wouldn't have a community anymore? I mean, you know, there has to be.
They're doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Black Rock.
Yeah.
Look at New Jersey.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. And so there has, it's a part of the reason that people wanna come and rent here is because of the community, because of the community that we've all helped build, because we own properties here, and that Paul's helped build, and this, this commercial ventures and, and those kinds of things. But as you start to get past a tipping point, all of a sudden that sense of community goes away. I think it was Dan Beachy who said, you know, in Crescent Beach, if somebody were to drop in and buy thirty homes and start renting them out, you know, their, their, their growing social calendar every summer would pretty much be negated.
So that's a good example of what we need to discuss, what you just said, okay? You said one thing, and then you backed off a little bit.
No, what I said was, I think short term rentals are here to stay.
That's fine, that's one point. So the question is, we have two, two sides of, of two extremes, okay? On one extreme, the proposal is we ban all short term rentals and then we fight all the losses.
He keeps saying that.
Well, I don't, I think you missed your definition.
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt any of you.
It's okay.
Let me finish. On the one extreme, we ban all short term rentals and we fight all the losses, okay? Anyone say that's a good idea?
Not me.
Okay.
I think you need to get that definition, though.
On the set, one sec. On the other extreme, we have no rules and no regulations, no rules. People can do whatever they want, okay? What do people think of that? Good or bad? Who says good?
I don't think you're giving, I, I think you're using a short term rental and you're not giving any definitions. You're saying either you want yes or no, and I think there's a lot of, I think this is not a clear cut question. I think there's a lot in between.
Okay, short term rentals was talking less than seven days.
Okay, well.
I think three should be.
Personally, I can, I can respond to that, then.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, that if you've got, you know, short term rentals and, you know, I, I listened to both. I read three beautiful presentations this evening, and you two made a good presentation last month. But, you know, the reality is, is that we are not, the Weeby decision was a, you know, really pretty defined decision. It was clearly was not unanimous. And, you know, I happen to agree with the, you know, the dissenters, and they were very well done. So I don't think we can look to that, and, and as this gentleman said, litigation, you know? And I chuckle a little at that because there'll be litigation on this issue around, not only here, around the country for years. So if somebody wants to step up and, you know, pay for that, you know, more power to you. But the, that's gonna go on for years. The reality is, I look at it very simply. I think that we've had rentals down here, and I was one of them, who rented for a season, weekly, for years in, in, in Old Line, before I moved to East Line. And the, and that's been going on, as Paul said, is far more than a hundred years, okay? And, and, you know, we don't, for number one, zoning, we don't have an issue. We have an issue because we don't even allow single family, you know, we don't even allow single family rentals in East Lime. If you listen to Mr. Mahalan said about it, it's not even described. So zoning does have to address, you know, that issue. I read Preston stuff as we were sitting here, that's way overbearing, in my opinion. You know, but there's some great points in there, but it's overbearing.
It's a lot.
You know, Gary brought up, you know, anybody coming into a community and buying everything else. Well, Black Rock is doing that in New Jersey, and other places around the country, you know? And there's, and there's no stopping them right now. So the, that, that's always a possibility. However, even with that said, that's capitalism, okay? And I'm not against that. So am I against short term, short term rentals started out as renting your home in your house? That's how this all started, okay? Totally different animal. Now it's, now it's basically a brokerage firm, it's getting fifteen to twenty percent or whatever they get off the top. That's really what we, you know, we've gotten. And the, the concept is, as I said from the very first meeting, I believe I said it, and I know I've said it in a few meetings, there's a point where you become a hotel. There's a crossover point, okay? And I firmly believe that, not in your commercial business. It brings a whole different things in. I don't think rentals of, you know, a certain level, and I believe that tradition in this country has been weekly rentals and, you know, and weekly, monthly, annual student rentals or whatever, you know? And, and I think that's, you know, but to start running, you know, hotels. Now, listen, I'm fully aware that people can easily get around it. They wanna rent, they rent for the week, they're there one night. If you're gonna run a bachelorette party, then, you know, and of course you listen to Preston, they won't allow only six people, and where you're gonna park, and you're gonna, you know, and how you, how the hell are you gonna enforce it? I mean, that's kind of, you know, that's where we're bearing. Not that they're not right, but in that, but, you know, again, you're not. But if, you know, somebody wants to rent for two nights, stay there two nights, they're paying a weekly rate, okay? You know, and again, just like a hotel, you know, in, in, you know, your business district in downtown New York City? In Midtown, you're paying a higher rate Monday or Sunday night through Thursday night. Okay, weekends are discounted, all right? In a resort community, Miami, you're gonna pay, you know, how, you know, a hell of a lot more on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night than you are Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So the point is that, but, but those are tran, totally transient operations in commercial zones, you know? And I don't think we want, you know, and, and I do believe that we should have an ordinance. I agree with Gary on that. The zoning would grandfather everything in, that we, you know, grandfather existing in. You're gonna have to prove it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, some of these alluded to in these comments. But I think that the, I think an ordinance would, would level the playing field. I don't think that a, a, a seven day minimum, we've had it at Black Point, we've not had a problem. I don't think a seven day minimum is reasonable. It's what this country has been doing in vacation areas for hundreds of years, you know, and, or a hundred years or more. So I do, I, I think the idea of having somebody come in Monday, you know, Monday night, Tuesday night, somebody again Thursday, again on Friday, you know, not having, in a lot of resort areas where you have high demand, they put a minimum anyway. You have three night, four night, five night minimums in a lot of these, you know, resort communities. So I don't think that we'd be overly harming anybody who currently has an Airbnb by having a seven night minimum. I don't think we, we are, this is not, you know, this is not a community, you know, that is so profound, you know, that people are coming here. And, and most of Paul's arguments, and I, you know, I know we disagree on the seven night thing, but most of our arguments, everything he said was very, you know, very, very well. But most of what he described were people coming in for graduations. There's not very many graduations I've seen on, you know, on a Wednesday night. There are some, there clearly are some, and there's not that many colleges around here. So I don't think it's overbearing to have a seven night minimum. I believe in keeping things very simple. So I think a very simple ordinance, a seven night minimum, regulation, it sounds nice about registrations. It sounds nice about inspections. We're creating, you know, you know, and we can go on and on about safety requirements. But single family homes have never been inspected when you rent for academic rental or weekly rentals. Or, or, so we're gonna get more regulations, more administration, more costs, more fees. The honest people are gonna register, the unhonest ones are not gonna register. If you're not part of Airbnb, Airbnb, you're never gonna find out who's doing it, who isn't doing it. So that, you know, when I, you know, I, you know, I, I think simple is better. And the, and, you know, I'll give you an example too, is, you know, it is okay to have, in, in, in their city, you have co-ops, co-ops in most of the co-ops in most buildings. And occasionally, since they're kind of stupid, co-ops, they can do what they want. And usually, co-ops, you know, have restrictions, they can only have so many people renting in that neighborhood and, and, or in that building. And they can, you know, and, and they can do it on a lottery basis or revolving or whatever, but you just can't, you know, not everybody, you know, and that's an example of where people have got together and said, you know, they don't want, they don't want the whole building going one direction. So I think, my opinion, my simple, little, simple minded opinion is, keep it simple. I don't see anything wrong with, and I disagree with Gary in your definition of short term rentals. I don't see any definition, difference between renting, you know, renting for a week, a month, or whatever. If you're discussing it, you know, less than a week, short term rentals of less than a week, then I would say I'm not in favor of short term rentals less than a week. But, you know, I think that this country is founded on renting people's homes. It's a free country, and, you know, and that, I think, you have to be a breakpoint between that and a commercial business. I think we're gonna rent on a nightly basis for a hotel, and then we're harming the people who own hotels. So the people in this room, I believe, own hotels. So you're effectively harming them. And the, and I don't think as a, I, I think that if I had lived next door and I had a short term rental on the left and right side of me, and the people are coming in on a constant basis every other night, yes, I don't think I would, I don't think I'd appreciate that. I don't think most people in this town would appreciate that. So you gotta remember, there's this argument about, we've only heard a few people speak against it. The only people who really, really have paid attention to this, it's a silent majority.
Right.
When everybody, you know, so I, I, I don't think that that's a, you know, a real honest way of looking at that. I think we have to look at, our job is to look at the total and protect everybody. I don't think we're harming anybody if we made a seven day minimum, some ordinance with a seven day minimum. Put the thing to bed and move on. I think everything else, we're trying to make all these regulations, and, and I, I do think it should be an ordinance because, you know, otherwise things aren't grandfathered in. I think Gary made a great presentation that we should, you know, level up. that we should, you know, level the playing field across the board for everybody. I don't, I don't, and I do agree with Paul. I don't think short-term rentals are changing the, you know, you know, you know, the community. I don't think we're near that level. We may be at that level twenty or thirty years from now, you know, and it has happened in a few communities in this country, but I don't think we're there yet. So, and the, you know, and I don't wanna discourage, you know, the, you know, the entrepreneurial nature of, you know, people buying a home and, you know, renting it out on a weekly or more basis. I think that's just, you know, the standard. So I, I, I think those are in general, you know, are my feelings. Thank you.
So, John, so what I'm hearing, if we're, we can't get to the whole of this thing this evening probably, but what I am hearing from Greg and John and Paul and you, Gary, at this point is that your emphasis, and Paul certainly was in his memo he wrote, is on the, the history of rentals in this, in this town, particularly within the beach community. So that seems to be a primary focus or rationale for thinking that these are desirable. I still think there's many other questions you need to satisfy yourself about, not, not just that one bit of evidence. And, and that's something that I think we all have acknowledged on, on the committee, even though it's not, not here. I mean, Dan Beechey's not here, Ann Thoreau's not here. We have acknowledged that too. We understand that history. And it's written about in our report. So we understand that. But you, and you have to think, when you're trying to think about policy, you gotta think downrange a little, look downrange. So that's the issue. Are you, are you, you know, thinking of the current iteration of short-term rentals the way they are as sort of many, many businesses, many of them can be like that? Are you, are you happy with that as a, you know, throughout the town? Whether it's beach communities, in the rural areas, all over the place, especially if you do something by ordinance, that affects everybody. And it will affect, this is a point I spoke to last time. It will affect those three beach communities that have their own zoning, who wish to zone a certain way. And even some of those that don't have their own zoning but are completely, like Pine, Pine Grove, against short-term rentals. They don't mind shorter-term rentals, but they don't like the, the basic short-term, under-thirty-day rental. So.
Let me ask you one question too.
Yes.
I mean, you know, again, I keep talking about the difference between a commercial operation and a rental. And the, you know, this whole thing started again by people renting rooms, et cetera, et cetera. And the, and, but that, that means somebody who's in, you know, in those, and that's like a, you know, a bed breakfast type of situation, okay? And they're there. When you start going into a situation where these are commercial ventures, okay? Now, that means that by, you know, every, you know, eleven o'clock, you know, somebody vacates and by three o'clock they go back in, that means you got cleaning crews coming. You have constant, in your neighborhood, you've changed this to a business. At a weekly deal, we've lived with that, we've accepted it. That's this country. You know, now you're trying to input and to do, you know, change something that goes throughout the community and makes it a... So I think that's another thing you have to look at. You talk about parking and traffic and stuff, you know, and maintenance. Obviously, you're gonna have a lot more maintenance than something that's rented out, you know, seven times a week to different people, you know, than they are one, you know, than a weekly basis or a monthly basis at a time. So I, I, you know, to me, I think that the, and, and I think we have to think too, is that, you know, are we overregul- I heard Paul say the first meeting, you know, but, you know, and he's come a long way because first meeting he was against total regulations, you know, and total registration, anything. So the, but I, you know, the, so, and the, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, you know, and I probably, you know, listened to, how many months have we been? Twelve months we've been at this?
Mine is, just take, just remember, there was four and a half months that we didn't meet.
Okay, okay, well, whatever. And I think that we've heard some-
We went into hibernation waiting for Weeby.
I think we, you know, really got some, you know, great comments. The case has been resolved, but I think that, I take that case and I read the opinions, but I read the dissenting opinions also to give me, you know, more knowledge. And having a, you know, I come from a real estate background, so as Paul says, you know, I clearly don't have any short-term rentals in our portfolio. But we definitely have single-family home rentals, commercial, et cetera. So we do have some knowledge of that business. And so I do look at that and I just think that the, you know, we, you know, I'm the one who brought up the assessors and stuff like that and all that stuff.
Right, right, we did look into that.
And, and the, and I think, again, level playing field, you have seven-day rentals, it's been more the standard for the country and the assessments and there's no, I just think that the, it is not, and, and again, it may not solve Gary's problem. It's not gonna solve a problem if you got a prime property in a beautiful location and you can run events there and they're just gonna run it for a week. And, you know, they'll be there for two nights. It's not, we can't solve the world's problems, everybody's problems. But then he could address it, at least with the parking or whatever. So the, anyway, that's just, you asked for an opinion, I'm very quiet. But I, this is the time I, which is not, Brooke can tell you, is not my normal person.
That's all right.
But, but, you know, then since Gary kept prodding me here, giving an opinion, you know, that's, you know, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
You know, thank you for giving me-
Yeah, this helps us to answer the threshold question. So in your view, you see the, we'll say, the darker side of this, but you're thinking that that seven-day approach will help offset, this is what I'm hearing from you.
Yes, you're right.
Offset potential issues. It's not that you haven't looked downrange, but that you think that this is a way of, you acknowledged there could be more and more short-term rentals. Perhaps they would affect community more or housing stock more, but you think this, this approach might offset some of those ill effects or adverse effects?
I would agree. I think it's been, it's worked well when we are-
I, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I'm just trying to summarize what, what you're thinking.
It's worked, it's worked well when we are and, and it's worked well, you know, I believe throughout the country that people have been, you know, doing things for, you know, whether it be Vermont, the ski areas, et cetera, you know. So I don't think it's outside of the norm. That's all.
Okay, so, go ahead.
So I would argue that you still haven't answered the question. The question is this, okay? We, my understanding, according to Attorney Zamarca, and I'm not picking on you, I'm picking on everyone. Attorney Zamarca says, when Weeby came out, Weeby allows short-term rentals in East Line. So that means every house in East Line, if they wanna be a short-term rental, go have fun, rent it. That's what he said, okay? So my question is, I understand your seven-day business, but the question is, on one extreme, do we allow every house in East Line to be a short-term rental if people want it? Or do we say, hey, maybe we don't want that many short-term rentals in East Line? Maybe we'll say, hey, another option. We'll, we'll limit them to what we have now, okay? That's an option. We limit the number, the quantity of short-term rentals that we have now. They can get grandfathered in, but no new ones.
I don't, I, I see where you're coming from.
What do you think of that?
I don't agree.
Or anyone?
No, no, I don't agree with that because, first of all, I think the, the people who have them would be thrilled. And, you know, and the, so I think you're, you know, you're, you're tamping with entrepreneurship and you're, and with capital and gains and whatever. So I think, and the, and you're limiting the stock. So that means you're making things more valuable. Then again, that doesn't limit the, the field at all. I'm not saying, and this is not a socialistic view at all. It's more, there's the idea, let the market run itself, okay? I don't agree with the co-ops in New York where they will, you know, limit that.
Oh, we're not talking about co-ops. So the question is, so you're more, I'm just trying to see where you are. More towards unlimited quantity?
I, no, I have no problem. I think the concept of BlackRock coming in and buying up the entire area of Black Point or Crescent Beach or whatever, you know, is unlikely at this particular time. That might be a problem way past my lifetime. But the, but I, the, and as far as, is it, should it be, yes, I think that, first of all, zoning regulations lax in that, that we don't allow renting of homes. We're obviously not gonna force and stop it. I think if you ask Mr. Mahalan to go and stop people from renting their houses, we might have a revolt here. And the, so, so no, I think the answer to that question is yes, we should allow short-term rentals. My question is the definition.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you still didn't answer.
I think we should allow short-term rentals.
Unlimited.
I see short-term rentals as the same as a week, a month, or a year. It's the definition of short-term. I disagree with the Weeby case or anybody who tries to interpret it that it's a seven-day or a ten-day or a month deal, okay? And I think the alternate opinions on that and the concept of people saying, you know, they don't like an ordinance we put in, well, you've got, you just, what you've passed out tonight is two drastically different things and no ink in you, in Preston. Okay, there's gonna be legal challenges forever on this subject, as long as any of us are gonna be alive, all right? So, you know, I think we come up with a, you know, reasonable policy and the one I'm suggesting. And I know nobody agrees with me here, that's fine. But the reasonable policy is that we look at history and, and what, you know, and you guys are attorneys, I'm not, but common law has been, is rentals. We're not, nobody's gonna cease and desist for renting their house, whether it be on a weekly basis, anywhere in, in the state, I don't believe. If they try to, they're gonna have, you know, I mean, I would think that's gonna be a problem. And the, but, you know, it's been, you know, you know, something that's, and then specifically in beach communities or in resort communities, it's always been a week, you know. And the, look, people are always gonna cheat and they're gonna do things. And it's never gonna be a real issue until you have a problem like, if it was persistent, you have a problem like Gary's having in, in his neighborhood. And in another town right now, there's an issue where a person is trying to get, change their zoning in a, and get a special exemption, a special permit, a special exemption and, and to run a, you know, a, basically a wedding venue in a residential community. And they're gonna run events, you know, up to, I remember the number, fifty, seventy-five people. I was, we were there for another hearing and I happened to hear this. And, you know, and of course, the people, the neighbors were, were up in arms. And I think that's unfair, you know, and they did withdraw their application because the, the opposition was so large, you know. But the, but the point of the matter, I thought that was, would be unfair of a commission to give a special permit to allow somebody to run a commercial venture in the middle of a residential. Granted, this guy had, he had thirty acres, but you're thirty acres, you run, you hear a van, they get a plane, you know, it's probably open air. You're gonna hear, so anyway, I just use as, as an example. I just think that somebody has to take the position, there's gotta be a breakpoint between commercial and zone. We're not Houston, Texas, where they had no zoning. I don't have zoning now, but, you know, years ago, they had, you know, you know, I, I still believe they don't, do not have zoning. And so you can have some, you know, outlandish venture next to a residential high-rise. And it's just capital market prevails, you know, but I do think that we do have some limited responsibility to protect our residential neighborhoods from commercial ventures. If I went to get a special, and I just ask you all, if you went to get a special permit in your neighborhood, we complain about people running offices, home, home offices, more than having a car. I wanna have one employee. And I don't know what our, I don't know what our regulations are in East Line, I really don't. But I, some towns allow, you have one employee, you have a car. More than that, you can't have, you know, in, 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 you know, in, in office ventures.
All right, all right, let's give someone else a chance.
So, anyway, I, I, I've got, talking about, thank you.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Thanks, John.
So I think you're talking about two issues. You wanna answer unlimited, you know, it's hard to say you can have a rental where you live over there and you can have a rental over there, but you can't do it there.
Right.
That's not, you can't legislate that, I don't think.
It's a question. It's a question.
Because practically, it's never gonna happen. Practically, it's never gonna happen. So to have the arguments on legal matters of whether, yeah, sure, everybody can have a short-term rental.
That's your position.
Because practically, I know it's gonna be impossible to happen. It's not gonna happen. There's, people aren't gonna move out of their houses and go to Hurricane Alley and then, you know, rent their houses up here. It's just not gonna happen that way. A few may, but practically, it's not gonna happen. So I don't think it's an issue we have to worry about in terms of short-term rentals. I don't think we need to, to think about, we're gonna be overrun in East Line with short-term rentals if we don't establish a specific number. And I don't think we could ever establish a specific number. One, because I don't think you know what the, what the number is now.
I mean, we had that information from Granicus about what our number is.
From App, from Apps.
From Apps.
But there's a lot of people that don't go on.
Right, of course. There's under the radar.
You know, there are people that come to the community, the beach community, and just rent next year by the time they leave this year.
I think you have to assume that the number given by Granicus is actually, is somewhere higher. You have to just probably assume that. But I think the interesting thing was less that absolute number and the fact that year over year, there was a fifteen percent increase. So, you know.
I don't think the number is even close to being what's, I think it's quite a bit more than what they said, that people aren't reporting.
Yes, well, that, that's my point. That's my point. But that, that isn't, but that, that's not my con-
If it's the point, then what, where's the problem?
Okay, so.
This is a solution looking for a problem.
But I think, I think the idea is, if it continues to grow at fifteen percent a year, then three hundred houses turns into five hundred houses, turns into eight hundred houses. So that's the, whether there's a saturation point.
Right, right.
Would the fifteen percent be the same? In other words, I might be renting my short-term rental for twenty years. Nobody know about it. I didn't have Airbnb, I didn't have, right? People from Rocky Hill come down here every year, it's the same family. Maybe I might say, you know what, the RBO is the way to go, so I now register. Now, I'm part of that fifteen percent increase, although I've already been doing it for twenty years. So I think the numbers can be skewed in a way and you can't really tell.
Anything can be skewed, correct.
Yeah, it's, it's inexact, but at least that, there's that trend upwards. And I guess nationally, that trend of smaller communities having more short-term rentals year over year over year is another trend. And, and the only way that it seems to be stopped by some of the larger cities was more draconian regulation or an outright ban or something like that. So that, that, I think, is difficult to argue with. I think that's a pattern you see. Doesn't mean it's not desirable, I'm not making that judgment yet, but in other words, that's something that I think you can see in the evidence that we were given by Granicus and what else we heard. Another point I'd just like to make is, I'm glad that we have these different examples of Gary Pruja, your, your neighborhood, Paul, your neighborhood, and, and other rentals that, you know, whatever, your experiences. We did hear the other side. I mean, we didn't hear it in waves, but we did hear the other side of incidences, you know, of, of, of unruly guests, people who were, who were neighbors to STRs who had issues. So it's, it's not like it didn't happen, it doesn't exist, you know, so I think we can't ignore that. And we, we can also ignore, I think, you know, just sort of the common sense analysis by the analysts, by people who write about the STRs, that there is something qualitatively unique about the STR in a, in a community. That it, you know, it's different having a, you know, your neighbor is never really your permanent neighbor. And how does that really affect things? And the sort of investment people make in their communities, whether it's, you know, neighbor to neighbor, or your kids go to the school, or you're retired and you volunteer. It's a different thing. I happen to live next to a long-term rental. And I can tell you, I've had, there are wonderful folks that have lived there over the years now. But I have to tell you that there's always this kind of lack of connectivity. And I, before I did anything on this board, that's been my experience, is nice folks, but they, you know, they're, they know they're not gonna be there maybe for the year or whatever, or this is some sort of a transition between a house or something like that, that they're building or whatever. But it, there's, there's never quite that real connection. So that's been my own experience, so.
So I would make the argument, in my community, that pickleball is more of a problem in short-term.
Well.
Pickleball has divided our neighborhood right straight down.
I can tell you, as a tennis player, I can agree with you, Paul.
You know, that, that's where, that's where the disconnect of, I'm not talking to my neighbor or I'm not having anything to do, that's coming more pickle. People that live there.
It's made everyone crazy.
On a short-term basis, there's no problems. We've fought with pickleball for a year and a half.
I, I-
Trying to find some common ground, you know.
Can I ask Paul a question?
Yes, go right ahead.
Because you, no, because you are, you actually have, you know, an Airbnb, so you're doing this on a consistent basis. You know, what I'm proposing is, is a week to be the only effect. That's fifty-two rentals a year, okay? If you're, 'cause, you know, if you're not using it yourself, 'cause you live next door, you can rent out fifty-two times a year. And, you know- And, you know, you, you know, you know, you don't have to answer this, but I was just curious. In your case, are you renting out more than fifty-two times a year? Are you renting it out a hundred and fifty?
No.
You know, so, and how many people, if you set a rental rate, because I just said to Gary privately, which I shouldn't have done, I apologize. I said to Gary, Gary, you know, if you sent, if you sent a weekly rental rate of.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Brian, yes, yes, exactly. If, if you sent, you set a weekly rental rate, you know, of, you know, two thousand dollars, okay, or three thousand dollars in the summer, and you got a week. You know, his problem, when somebody comes in and rents one night for a thousand dollars on Saturday night and runs a bachelorette party there, there's a problem. Three thousand is going to solve the issue. You're not going to get that bachelorette party. But, you know, and again, you're not likely to rent that house. Are you really going to rent that house on a Saturday night to a separate person, then a Sunday, or Sunday to Monday? You know, how many one-night rentals have you done?
We don't do, we don't, we don't allow one-night.
Right.
We do a minimum of three nights.
From three nights, so it's typically, I would imagine it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
A lot of people that come in Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they go back home. There are a lot of people.
So are you, you know, so, but how much of a burden would it be for a seven, you know, a seven-day? How, how much would that actually limit your, your business, if you were honest about it? Because really, no, I don't think you can be personally honest. I mean, if you're running.
An aberration.
I will tell you, because you asked me, that if the, some of the people that we, if most of the people that we rented three days to, we said you had to do seven days, we wouldn't get them at all.
If you're, how about the same rate? You have a three-day minimum, but here, that's your week. Come seven days or three days.
They don't want to be here seven days. They want to be here three. They got to work, they want to see the graduation, they want to get married, they go back home.
But it's the same rate. So what do you say, one night, three nights?
It's not the same rate.
No, he's hypothetically, he's saying.
Saying, you charge the same rate, you have a three-night minimum, but you get the seven nights for three. So if you want to stay longer, that's great. If you don't, like, if you go to a hotel, you have a three-night minimum, they'll say, pay three, you get the fourth or fifth night free. So I'm saying, stay three, you get four nights free. You pay for the three prime nights, you get four nights free. Is that really a burden on your operation?
I, you know, in answer to your question, it's probably not a burden on my operation. I don't think it would ever happen that people would take advantage of something like that.
Okay, so there's, so what you're giving up then, is the chance that if somebody comes in on a, if they came in on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you could probably re, rent the weekend. But if somebody was there on a, on a, on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, or Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, you're probably not likely to rent Saturday night, you know, leaving on Saturday. So, so the, as individuals, you have a three-night minimum, so if somebody got to rent Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday? No, you have a lot of gaps.
There's a lot of gaps. There's gaps of a month.
That's my argument about a seven, that's my argument about a seven-night minimum.
Right.
Two things. One, you'd be amazed how many people rent Thursday, Friday, Saturday, have to get out Saturday morning, and somebody else comes in Saturday night.
Yeah.
Number two, Madam Chair and Co-Chair, it's nine o'clock.
I know.
Late.
Yes, this is where I'm headed.
I, uh.
You shouldn't ask me a question.
That's okay. So, I mean, I'm, I'm very, I know it's tedious, but I, I think it's very helpful that we.
It's a good meeting, actually.
Um, that we ask the difficult question and start trying to um make our decisions based on evidence that we have gathered. That's, that's fine. That's all I think that Gary's asking for. And I, I agree with that completely. So let's do this. Okay, so that's, I think, a reasonable discussion on this point. We are on, um, so let's, I think we.
Don't forget this, this was.
Okay, yes, so, okay, so how about, when we're, we can meet, I'd like to meet in two weeks if we could. Does that work for people?
Um, I'll probably be, well, depends what night, hold on a second, let me tell you what my schedule, not that matters, but my schedule.
If we stay with Monday nights, Monday evenings, so that would be November fourth?
Um, that's Election Day.
Oh, no.
No.
No, that's not a good day, yeah.
Yeah, it's not Election Day itself, but it's.
The EVOs.
The EVO, yeah, that kind of stinks. Okay, I agree.
I am, uh, I am, uh, well, let's see, that's true.
How about the eleventh?
I am, I am, just for your, and then the following Monday is Veterans Day, but I'm away, you know. I would be away the following, uh, I'm away, you know, the eleventh.
Okay, the, well, the point is.
All right, we'll do it on the eleventh.
That's okay, yeah, that's fine, it's okay. I talked, talked enough for three meetings tonight.
We could, we could meet in a week. We could meet on the twenty-eighth.
I'm sorry, say again, Greg.
Say, we could meet in a week.
Yeah, I'm here.
October twenty-eighth.
Yep.
That's fine.
That's okay with me.
Uh, actually, do I have anything? Oh, hang on.
I won't be here.
And you won't be here.
Well, we have the recordings.
But we could record.
I'm not available on the twenty-eighth.
You're not available twenty-eighth. Okay.
What are we, what are we doing at the next meeting?
Okay, so.
This, this piece of paper.
Yes, yes, Paul, it's, um, it's really those final steps. These are the steps. If we're going to get to making the addendum to a status, to our status report, this is what we have to do. I mean, um.
Yeah, some discussion.
We have to get to at least number five, which is propose approaches, and it may be more than one approach that we, that we recommend.
Can we do, what's the matter, Paul?
Yes.
Too much?
We can be here until October of next year.
What would you, how would you like to see the process?
So in an effort to, in an effort to.
To recognize where we've been and what we've done, which we've all talked about, you know.
I, I think we're trying, I think we're all on the same page, trying to, trying to get there, right?
If I may.
Yes, great.
You have written an interim report, which was very detailed and very accurate. And I think all we need to do now is write a section that goes on the end of that, say, here are some concrete recommendations that the Board of Selectmen might like to consider. That's really all we're supposed to do.
Right.
So, um, I think what we need, what, in my past life, what I would do at this point is, I would either do it myself or I would ask somebody else to write a straw man proposal and bring it to the group, and everybody takes shots at it. And if you are happy with it, I can certainly do that. I see Gary saying, no, I want to do it, but.
You hear me say.
I didn't hear that.
John did it, it'd be one page.
I didn't hear that, right?
Don't we have, though, at least a half dozen different approaches at this point?
We do. We actually have.
Too many, huh?
We have.
Well, maybe we can distill those six.
Exactly, right.
Into action items. And where there's agreement, we say, okay, there's four people who like this portion.
Yes.
We could do it like ranked choice voting, you know. Bring your top five items.
Okay, I, I don't mind working with you to distill.
Yes.
Do, okay, we, we could distill the, um, the, the eight different opinions or the seven opinions we have, because we haven't heard from Dan on, on the topic.
He's been quiet.
Yes, and tonight he did have to work, so, um, but we'll try to get his thoughts together. But that was my goal, was to try to find the common places and the places where we disagree.
But I think, you know.
So the common places, everybody, I don't think anybody here, except maybe you, would say, let's prohibit short-term.
Yeah, and I didn't have a prohibition, I just was suggesting, yeah.
You're, you're the only one who hasn't clearly said, I won't prohibit, right? So for the most part, we're all in on having short-term rentals. I think for the most part, we're all in some type of registration form to, whether you call it an ordinance that mandates a registration form, or some, some kind of form that identifies these short-term rental activities and even perhaps longer rental activities, right? I think pretty much everybody agrees on that route, no?
I disagree.
You don't want a registration of everybody?
No, I, that's fine, but I disagree with the first point, that we're all on the same page with respect to allowing short-term rentals. This was the question I was trying to pose today, was do we allow, do we, do, this is the other option, okay? Do we ban short-term rentals as of whenever, okay, and just allow the ones that exist? And then they have to prove that they're grandfathered in. That's, that's one step. The other step is to say, we're just, anyone can have a short-term rental, we're just going to have regulations. Then that's just fine, but we need to make that.
That's where I'd be.
Well, that's because you own one, and you've never been open to anything else.
Because what?
I just said what?
I, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I said, you own a short-term rental, and you really haven't, I don't know, I have not seen a lot of consideration of options. That's all.
I don't know that there is an option. Prohibit or you allow. And if you, the courts have said you can't prohibit and allow in the same community, otherwise you're open to.
Zomarka said that what we can do, if we want to, is we can ban, as of a particular date, allow existing short-term rentals to grandfather in. Do we want to go that route or not?
Isn't that a recommendation right here?
That's.
That's bad.
My.
That's his better option. When he did the analysis of many options, that one ticked the boxes better.
Because.
So this is, so this is one approach.
Correct.
I've got an approach that largely borrows from a lot of Paul's approach, but then differs radically. And, um, everybody's got, you know, variations.
Yes, and Thurlow had.
Pretty much down there.
And Thurlow had the zoning approach, but it was specific to, you know, to certain zones. Um, and that was the question I did ask, um, Attorney Zomarka. Not sure, I'll, I will say, you can all read it. I'm not sure it was, it was answered in that first response, but go ahead.
Can, can, can we come back to picking our next meeting?
Yes, but we're, we're just, I guess, there was a question as to.
What we're doing.
What we will be doing at that meeting, so I think.
Continuing this debate.
I would sharpen, I would sharpen the focus.
I think we can definitely, you know, we certainly brought it in today by having something like this that shows you steps. Even if each step takes five minutes, you've got to get to number nine somehow. You have to get in front of the Board of Selectmen.
What's our next meeting?
So, um, okay, um, our next.
Twelve? That's a Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
Day after Veterans Day, which is the eleventh.
Yes, so, Brooke, how does it look on the, on the town calendar for, we could meet here or we could meet in the other room?
What day is it in here?
November twelve. It's a Tuesday.
I, I will be away that day, but that's fine. No, that's fine. No, don't do it because of me, that's, you're, I don't think I missed a meeting yet.
You've been very active.
I'm entitled to miss a meeting.
Right, you've been active. You voiced your position. Yeah, yeah, we got it.
You've been to pretty much every meeting.
Right, exactly.
That I can remember. I'm sorry, who's here?
Planning.
Planning, that's okay. We can still meet in the conference room. That, that works. It's actually easier.
Another room over there?
Historic Properties.
Historic Properties is there? Oh dear, um.
Is that it? Just those two rooms?
Yes, because the, the other room downstairs is pretty small. It's another little tiny room.
It's smaller.
Yeah. So.
Oops. So.
Do we still think that the fourth, I know it's the night before the election, but, um, do we still think that's a, that's a no-go? But you can't make that?
I'm not, I'm in New York.
Okay. How about, uh, well, that's election night, we can't do that. Uh, I know, um, I hate to.
We're at the eighteenth.
I guess we go to the eighteenth, Monday, the eighteenth.
That's, that looks empty, yeah.
All right, so that, I think, at least we have a place to be, and so far, people have been said they can't come, so.
What is the eighteenth?
The eighteenth is a Monday, Monday, the eighteenth.
Well, I didn't hear what Brooke said.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that looks like, I don't see anything on the calendar.
I see.
So we can meet here, which is fine, because then I can record, which helps. Okay, so, why don't we do that?
That's Mickey Mouse's ninety-sixth birthday.
Oh, really? Okay. So I think, I think we're good with that. Um, I just want to make, anyone have a last comment? I, I do want to make one comment because of the, um, uh, public delegations, you know, earlier this evening, uh, where Attorney Winkler spoke. I, I just want to point out that, and this is very heartfelt, the committee has worked very hard over these months, and even though we're the short-term rental committee, it doesn't mean we're going in any one direction or another. As you can see by what you heard, and not all of us are even here tonight. There's two more members with two other opinions. Um, if you read our report, our status report, it will be crystal clear, I believe, that we have been as neutral as possible in gathering information and presenting that information. That report was not only written, but it was presented to the Board of Selectmen, so, um, and I think, uh, we're very proud of that fact that we've, um, really made that effort. And that's the effort going forward, you know. We, we've tried to get to consensus whenever we can, and we knew that at this point, when we had to do a final recommendation post-WIBI, post-state statute, new state statute, that it was going to be difficult. And as you know, um, as, as the public knows, um, we have definitely a complex situation here with three beach communities with their own zoning, our own town zoning. We have beach, beach communities who are incorporated, do things by their bylaws, have very strong opinions. We've tried to balance that, so it is, it is like a high-wire act. I can't, I can't articulate it any differently, really. So, um, thanks for your comments. I just wanted to be clear about that, and I think the, the committee members would agree with me. Um, none of us, uh, you know, has, you know, really tunnel vision on this, so, okay, well, thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
That, that report, I presume, is available online?
Uh, yes, um, it is available. We have our own webpage, um, under Town Government.
Yeah.
Um, it's, you'll see, it'll say, um, Ad Hoc Short-Term Rental Committee. That report's there, yes. And it's, it's lengthy. Um, with the exhibits, it's over a hundred pages, but the body of it is like twenty-something pages.
It's a little reading, right?
Yeah, yeah. All right, with that, um.
Will we adjourn, Madam?
Yes, and I have a sec, second to that.
Second, second, second.
Thank you.
And thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
Nice evening.
Yes.